I can try and, you know what I'll do is I'll text.
Yeah, we'll give.
Trying to get one of our council members who is away on the phone line, but it's proving to be difficult because it's only going to voicemail. So if you bear with us, it will be a little bit of delay.
See if he was on his texts.
Yeah.
He's on the phone anyway. Happens in places. The answer is so quick, it sounded like you were on the phone.
Oh, it was the voicemail pickup. It was quick, yeah. What happened? James, did you mark the numbers?
I was gonna say, what's this?
Oh, there's a lot there. That's under it. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, next though. Should we try calling? Mm-hmm. No baby yet, yeah?
No baby.
I think the baby was doing so much talk. Apparently no, we're switching.
My mom's going to be similar to you, your baby. With the phone, it was that she kept getting happy.
It's a different way, Cam?
And both of them, she's like, oh, I think he's happy. And she had gotten inadvertently into a different.
But it's dead, it's dead, it's lit.
What the hell? It's not here, I'm not better. Absolutely, we were over on Sunday, just fixed her, showed her how to get to, get by herself. Who just told her she's getting around. They never tried to cheat.
Oh, I'm sorry. Should be soon.
It was so funny, it's something that, it was a penny. I was sitting there, I was like, oh, this is kind of sad because Penny was in the house, and we heard it was. You know, I was really mad, and Ray wanted to turn back, so.
Oh, it's still. I need, I need a couple of stuff, jerks. I don't know, I have a couple for life. I have some apples on.
Nothing?
Well, so shall we carry on then? If you didn't want to try?
I as well.
I know it's really frustrating for me, I tried to call in. What had meeting agenda was about, but I was away and had all organized despite it. And, uh, then I thought, I guess it's quite complicated for Marcy to try to organize that from the sense, so she went. Yeah, we decided we're not going to do that.
Well, not over that.
Hi there, have you reached the telephone at Brox Martin?
It was loud.
So, if I get a text back from the hall or anything, I'll send you a call down.
Okay, I'd like to call the special committee of the whole meeting to order at five thirty-seven. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, just wondering if the committee would like to amend the agenda to include public participation? And that would take, mean a two-thirds vote, so that would mean four out of five to vote in favor of that. What's committee's wish on that? Anybody like to make that motion?
I would move that we add a public participation as item, uh, one A.
Get a second or?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries, so we have public participation as, uh, number one A. So, um, I guess that's, uh, we need a vote on the main motion, approval of the agenda. Do we?
As amended.
Yeah, as amended? Anybody want to make that motion? Secondary? All those in favor? Motion carried? Okay, so it's a public participation period, if anybody would like to come forward and speak to the committee, now's your opportunity. No? Second time? No? There's nobody wanting to come forward tonight, so we'll carry on to adoption of the minutes. Uh, the first set of minutes is special committee of the whole minutes for March the first.
Second.
All those in favor? Discussion or?
For boss discussion.
Yeah, all those in favor? Okay. The second set of minutes, um, special committee of the whole.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you?
That's okay, just on the second set of minutes, I have an amendment to propose to page six. Item three point three, the review of the core budget by department. Uh, instead of, um, the core budget was not discussed as it was reviewed at the March first special committee meeting of the whole. I would like to add the following statements. One, the committee received and discussed the twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one financial plan detail, which included a review of the departmental core budgets, capital projects, and special projects at the March first special committee of the whole meeting. And two, the review of core budgets by department was not discussed at the March second two thousand seventeen special committee of the whole meeting due to a preceding adopted motion recommended to council that the proposed twenty seventeen twenty twenty-one budget be approved in principle and staff be instructed to prepare the two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one budget bylaw and that the March second two thousand seventeen special committee of the whole minutes, um, sorry, never mind that last part, just the first two bullets that I wrote, read out.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried? Uh, next item on the agenda.
We just voted on the amendment, I believe.
Sorry?
I, I have another amendment to propose.
Oh, sir, go ahead, Jason.
Uh, page, um, five, I believe it is, where it's moved by councillor Nalt at the bottom of the page. It, it should really read that the two thousand and seventeen overtime and casual budget for RCMP, not for RCMP watch clerks, for RCMP, be reduced by the amount of forty-two thousand dollars to account for the savings promised with the part-time for the new watch clerk.
Mayor Hamilton?
Just clarification councillor Nalt, that it be for which, your, your mic reverberates a bit.
I'm sorry, the, um, the presentation the RCMP made to us had an accounting of where the watch clerk's, uh, budget was coming from, and it was a reduction in casual relief and overtime budget, it didn't specify casual relief and overtime for watch clerks. So I'm just suggesting we remove the, for wat, the watch clerks from there.
Madam Chair, if I can recommend change, if, um, I think if we change the word for and changed it to read that the twenty seventeen overtime and casual budget for RCMP watch clerks be reduced by the amount of forty-two thousand as a result of the hiring of a part-time watch clerk rather than for. So it's just clear that, uh, your SNP were suggesting that the part-time watch clerk would reduce the overtime and casual budget by forty-two thousand dollars, does that work?
That would be suitable. So I would move such an amendment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried?
Move adoption of the amendment, set as amendment.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried? Next item on the agenda is new business, four point one, analysis of the city of Callwood's property tax. Andrea?
Thank you very much. So, prior to preparing the budget bylaw as directed by council at our last meeting, staff are seeking some additional direction this evening on, um, our property tax rates because that will be coming forward in a separate bylaw, but one of the things that, um, has resonated with me over the three years now I've been working with council is the fact that our business tax multiplier is seen to be quite a lot higher than other similar municipalities on Vancouver Island. And it is, um, not an easy matter to solve this. I appreciated the fact that one of the councillors sat with me this afternoon and I tried to explain what is very highly technical. But basically, if we're going to be reducing the business tax multiplier, that means a reduction in tax, in a nutshell, paid by our commercial properties, and that then shifts the tax burden to our class one. So I have provided you with a brief report this evening, and I've also provided you with a summary of, um, hopefully some comparisons, so I'm going to just start by just briefly reviewing my report, and I'll pause if you have questions on that, and then I wanted to just look a little bit at the data in, that I've given you in support of my report. So, this is something that's been kind of on the back burner for a few years, and I thought this year, let's try and actually see if we can't put some parameters around this. If this is what council would like, is some kind of a planned way of reducing the business tax multiplier, let's make sure that everyone knows that there's a cost to it and that there is a political appetite for this because this is, um, basically in the realm of council, some of these decisions. So our draft twenty seventeen twenty-one financial plan is based on a two percent tax increase, which matches the local rate of inflation. And based on what we levied last year for taxes, that generates about two hundred and fifty-five thousand, so a one percentage point based on last year's revenue gives us a hundred and twenty-five, so two percent is just over that for two hundred and fifty-five thousand. We do, um, also have available additional tax revenues this year due to, um, new construction in Callwood. And if we were to tax the new construction at the, um, same mill rate that we would use to raise the two percent for our class one, in total, we'd be looking at total revenues of six hundred and fifteen thousand. So, council has indicated that right now our multiplier is three point eight nine, which is definitely high compared to our colleagues on Vancouver Island. The problem that we have is we don't have a lot of flexibility to create that shift. We don't have any industry, we don't have light industry, major industry, and ninety-three percent of our assessment base, the values are residential. So we are definitely a residential community at this point in time. And the only other source of taxation we have is class six, and that, um, total assessed value makes up seven percent of our assessment base. So we do have some structural problems, I call it, in terms of doing this because we are limited with that. So, I think maybe I'll just take a pause now before we get into the analysis and options because I would like to draw your attention, I did do a wee bit of data mining, I don't do this too often, I don't want to be seen to be burying you in stats, but I thought some of these facts were quite interesting, and that's the two pages attached to my report. And in there, there's a column called business tax multiplier. Callwood is showing up in a box there at three point eight nine. And the things that are important there, the percentage of the actual tax bill that's paid by residential is seventy-seven percent. I'm on the Callwood box right now, there's three lines of data for each community. And then underneath that, the percentage of the assessment base. So the tax bill that residents pay is seventy-seven percent and business pays basically twenty-one, and that's because of our business multiplier. There's a little teeny bit of light industry in Callwood, and I think we have two folios making up recreation nonprofits, so you can see we don't really have any diversity there. So I've tried to pick communities on Vancouver Island, not necessarily all similar in size, but some of them have similar demographics, and I've tried to highlight a few of those. Esquimalt, for example, has a lower business multiplier, and they have a fairly hefty residential tax base, but what is not included in these stats that I pulled off the provincial website is the pilt revenues. And Esquimalt has a great deal of pilt revenues to keep in mind, far more than we have here in Callwood. Langford, one of our nearest neighbors, I just wanted to draw attention to that. They do have a pretty, uh, low multiplier at three, but they also have a great deal, more of their taxes are paid by business. They have a lot more, as we know, big box stores, a lot more shopping area. So that allows them to offer that lower business tax multiplier. I've highlighted a couple of others on the next page. North Sanich, for instance, has a similar, um, makeup to us. The actual value of their assessment base, ninety-two percent is residential. And, uh, they have actually quite a high, I think they have the highest business multiplier in North Sanich at five point one four. And, um, I don't, I don't know what Oak Bay's secret is, if anybody knows, I'd like to know, they do have a ninety-seven percent residential tax base, but they enjoy offering only two point one one as their business tax multiplier in Oak Bay. Sanich, um, has a pretty high residential base, and their, I would say their multiplier is in the middle of the pack. So that, I'm just going to pause for a minute just to see if there's any questions on some of the, I can't answer all your questions on data, but if there's something that jumped out at you. Does anybody in, on the committee have questions? Councillor Nalt?
Uh, yeah, I had a couple of comments on that, but I'd like to do it by putting a couple of graphs up on the, uh, on the screen and, and speak to the graphs. So I'm, I'm questioning the entire rationale behind wanting to reduce the business tax rate. So if I could put the graphs up, I think it'll be fairly clear. This first graph is a plot of the, uh, assessment value versus the multiplier for all of the towns listed in the data you were given. The, um, point to make here is our, our rate is on the higher side, there are higher, higher municipalities, but if we're thinking of reducing the multiplier in order to attract businesses, the towns with the lowest multiplier do not have the highest number of businesses. Uh, the correlation is just about zero. A perfect correlation is one, no correlation is zero, the correlation here is point zero nine. There's almost no correlation between where your assessment, uh, value is and what your multiplier is. So if you want to put up the next JPEG please? And this is, um, I can't read the. Right, this is the percentage of taxes, uh, received versus the, the rate, and there's absolutely no relationship between those two. And just to show that the statistics work, if you can put up the third one. That is the percentage of your assessment versus the, uh, percent of tax received, and no surprise, with a, a bigger proportion of assessment, you get a bigger proportion of, uh, your taxes from there. So it's, uh, just to show it works, it's a, it's an R value of, I think, point eight six. So if we're using the rationale that lowering the tax rate is going to bring more business to Callwood, I think that's a totally fallacious, uh, argument. If we're doing it just because we want our businesses to pay less, that's another issue altogether, but there's, if you're using the economic justification of bringing more business, it does not work. Thank you, that's all.
Any further comments? Councillor Day?
Thank you, um, I was reviewing the statistics and, uh, um, wondering especially about the regional district of Nanaimo, who does, uh, like many areas here, that the business district is not necessarily within the city of Nanaimo, a lot of it is within the regional district. So I did try to look up those, uh, numbers myself without very much success. Uh, I guess that is the, that sort of brick wall, the difference between a municipality and a regional district that I ran up against. But I just wondered, um, if we could comment at all about, uh, those? Because to me, the, the biggest issue is, um, proximity. So if a business has a choice to set up here, View Royal or Langford, I can see the tax rate maybe having an impact, otherwise, I'm not sure that it does have a big impact.
Any further comments?
Okay, so this, I'll just, um, basically say staff are not bringing this forward because this is something we are personally trying to promote, but it is something that I've definitely heard council struggling with. So I wanted to give you what we had available for statistics, and thank you very much councillor Nalt for doing that. Not all municipalities go by, um, measure the effectiveness of their tax policy for class six based on the business tax multiplier, unfortunately, it's the most easily available statistics, so all municipalities are required to submit statistics annually to the provincial government, and this is where I have pulled this information. But, um, I, and I was trying to sort of keep us on one track at a time, but it is possible going forward, we could look at it another way of measuring this, which is business tax revenue, for instance, as a percentage of our total revenue. That is something that Victoria did in about two thousand and twelve. They were reviewing their tax policy, and they were going to try to reduce the business tax multiplier. And very similar to what I'm showing you this evening, it's not easy to do it, if that's going to be your measurement. And they said, well, that's not working for us, so we're going to look at a different measurement system. So that is, that was sort of my plan B after we kind of hashed this through, but, but you've, um, got there ahead of me, so that's fine, it's a, it's a very good, um, item for discussion.
Any further comments from committee? Councillor?
Great, thank you, to the chair. Um, I guess my two cents are, I, you know, Jason makes great points. I don't think we necessarily need to lower the multiplier this year, as we can tell from twenty sixteen, we're still getting in a lot of businesses, even with the current multiplier. So I, I don't think that's a problem currently, but in the future, I still would like to see us planning to reduce the multiplier, and I say that to keep competitive with our partners, because I think where we're located, it does make a difference, being beside Langford, being beside View Royal, and then with our partners, Sanich, Victoria, and, and the others, so, you know, today I'd say, no, we don't need to lower it. So, you know, today, I'd say, no, we don't need to lower it. We're doing okay, but we still need to think about it later. Thanks.
Any further comments? Mary Hamilton?
It's something that councils have discussed in the past and, you know, things that have been brought up. Most of our businesses are small. They're not big corporation. We don't have the benefit of box stores and probably will never see them, not, it's not on our horizons. But most of ours are family-operated businesses, and, you know, perfect example Dairy Queen, who has over decades sponsored numerous minor sports organizations, teams, you know, and allowed for them to participate in activities out there. So, we've looked at trying to equalize those things. Is this year the right year? You know, we're still kind of middle of the pack-ish, maybe a little slightly higher, and something certainly that we need to be considering, and maybe your offer from finance to find some other measurables to, you know, enlighten us would be a good part rather than just simply what everybody else is doing.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I would very much like to support business in Callwood because I think it's important for the residents of Callwood to have businesses close by and not have to go to a neighboring municipality. But they definitely don't have to be the same type of businesses as are found in other municipalities. You know, Costco, of course, is a good example. Not everybody is going to have a Costco, and that's fine. I wouldn't want the traffic that goes with it. But we do want to have local resources, so I would really, I have a hard time supporting, reducing the multiplier simply based on, you know, what our multiplier is. I would like, mostly, and I guess I should explain my reasoning for that, is that it's my understanding through the Chamber of Commerce that most of the small businesses, not all, but most of our small businesses do not actually own the properties. They lease or rent the premises. And there is no guarantee when we lower a multiplier for the business class that that savings would even be passed on to our local businesses. So, I would like to do things to quantify how we're doing as far as businesses are concerned, to support businesses in our community, which we have tried over many years now through the Chamber of Commerce and our support for them to do that. But I would like to come up with some different metrics for measuring how we're doing on developing our businesses and proceed carefully to support business growth in Callwood and not just necessarily give a tax break to the landowners who happen to own commercial land in Callwood.
Madam Chair, if I could ask for committee's indulgence to let the Director of Finance go through the balance of her report because there's some pretty important information in there that I think the committee should hear before you deliberate too much into the pros and cons because we are seeing, I'm going to say, a negative trend if we're using the multiplier as a means to evaluate ourselves. If that's an appropriate measurement, that's another discussion. But if we're going to use that, I think it's really important that you hear the balance of the Director of Finance's presentation.
Thank you. So, I've given you some background, and then back to my report, I've done a bit of an analysis for you. And the first one we did is we levied a 2% tax increase equally on all tax classes. And the result of that, due to the makeup of our tax base, is the multiplier for Class 6, if this is what we're really worried about, goes up a tiny bit. That does give us the total amount of taxes that we were looking for in our budget. That's one result. The next scenario we ran was, we went, well, let's levy a 2% tax increase on all classes except Class 6. And let's, so I played with a couple of different scenarios. If we reduce the Class 6 tax rate by 2%, that allowed us to keep the multiplier the same as last year. But the problem with that is when you do that, because the business taxation contributes heavily to our tax revenues, that pushed our Class 1 increase from 2% up to 3.16. If we try, sure.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to pause there for a minute because I think that was, that's an important part of this discussion tonight. To just keep our multiplier at the 2016 level, we have to already contemplate a shift of the residential tax going up to 3.16 instead of 2% and business class dropping by 2% just to maintain our existing level or the 2016 multiplier. So, I'm just sorry for interrupting, but I just wanted to make a point that, you know, we're in a situation where we're seeing rising multiplier, and the only way to curb it is to start shifting tax dollars, again, if the multiplier is an important measuring tool for council.
Thank you. So, another scenario that we did was levy 2% tax increase on all classes except business, and we then reduced the business class by, the tax rate itself, by 4%. And the result was your multiplier went down, basically 1/10th of a percent, from 3.89 to 7.93. But there's a price to be paid for that, which was the Class 1 tax rates had to go up from 2 to 3.73. And this is where, after I ran a few of these scenarios, I thought we should probably have a discussion with council on this to ensure that we're cognizant of the effects. The only other thing to do, which is not listed here, and I don't, I've had discussions with our CIO about this, is you might elect to levy less tax revenue. In other words, instead of the amount that we've got budgeted right now, if you said, "Well, I'm prepared to levy less tax revenue," say 400,000 instead of the 600 that we're looking for right now, what you do then is you are able to keep your Class 1 increase to 2%, it drops the multiplier, but you're now $200,000 short on your total tax revenue. And I don't know that that's anything council wants to do.
Madam Chair, we deliberately did not recommend that, and we won't be recommending it primarily because it puts you into a similar situation that you were in a decade ago where you have the, I'm going to say, the compounding loss of not keeping up with inflation. So, if you, if you don't keep up with inflation, eventually, the compounding effect of not keeping up with inflation results in some council in the future having to deal with a very difficult situation of not having enough tax revenue to address your annual needs, and you end up looking at a large tax increase like you did approximately a decade ago. So, we deliberately kept that off the report. If it's council's wish to go to a zero tax increase, that's council's wish, but it's certainly not something that staff would recommend.
Thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure because some folks may be sitting there thinking that, but we want you to understand the impact of these decisions. So, in terms of options, like I've given you the main scenarios, and there's a lot of numbers there. If you want to look at them, we can. I don't know if you would like to. We have some really big spreadsheets. Jen, if you want to bring up the one that has the 2%, the 2% on there, we'll at least, yeah, it's going to be hard to see. That's what I thought. This basically gives us the revenue that we were budgeting for, and it shows a 2% increase all the way down, but I don't think we're going to be able to see it. That's why I've given you some numbers in your report. Yeah. I don't think it's going to work for you. I think, let's finish going through the report, and then if you have questions, we can get to that, and we'll see if we need any more detail. How about that? So, in terms of options, then, in the report, I've done the analysis, and, you know, it is up to council. You may elect to use the business tax ratio, and you may want to try and say, "We're going to force it down each year by a certain amount," realizing that that does trigger a tax shift, a permanent tax shift to Class 1. Or you may wish to review the business tax ratio each year, which is kind of what we've been doing somewhat ad hoc each year, and make annual decisions based on that year's circumstances. And, or you can let the ratio shift each year, which is what a lot of municipalities do, because as your assessment composition base shifts, it does drive different ratios. And the other option, I think I may have heard this evening, and I was going to leave it up to you, but you've already jumped to it, is do we want to find a different measurement tool rather than the business tax multiplier? So, I think I'll take a pause now for further discussion. Any comments from committee members? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I think, you know, in wanting to support business, probably the best thing that I know of to support business is predictability and being able to, you know, count on that, you know, that we're not going to have wild fluctuations in taxation is probably more supportive of business than almost anything else that we do. So, and recognizing that we're not the only taxing agency, that we are also going to be flowing through tax increases to pay for sewage treatment, to pay for other CRD services, to pay for school taxes, library requisitions, keeping to providing a solid service at a reasonable cost each year. So, I like the idea that we are sticking to something predictable, that our taxes that we have control over are only increasing by the rate of inflation. And I'm not particularly concerned about what that multiplier looks like because I do think that we should find a different measurement tool. So, of the options that we're looking at tonight, I would be more inclined to look for the 2% increase across all the classes, which would increase the ratio this year, and to review that again next year with an eye to supporting business and coming up with a better measuring stick for how we're doing at that.
Any further comments? No other comments? Mary Hamilton?
Well, as I said, I'm just not sure that we're there yet. You know, we've been developing over the decades as residential, and we see small business come online. We have major developments that will bring more mixed use into our fold, and that, you know, taxes are one of the certainties in life, one of, just a few. But I don't want that overburdened by, you know, either area. So, a fair and equal split, I would be interested in seeing whether we can have a more forward-thinking measurement tool brought up that would better reflect the differences in there, and it just might not be the right time this year.
Any further comments? Counselor Day?
Great. Thanks, to the chair. I concur with everything that's been said, and I think I just want to point out another option for a measuring tool is, when I first started, you know, I kept hearing that the business multiplier is too high, too high, and now we're like, well, is it really that high? Well, maybe we're feeling like not so much so because we're still seeing, you know, development and businesses wanting to come here. So, you know, I think, I think we are at that point where we're fluctuating lots, just need to wait to see, and, you know, we're just asking for the rate of inflation, so I'm quite happy with that.
Counselor Day?
I didn't want to cut off discussion, but I'm not seeing any more hands. So, I would move that we have, recommend to council Option A with the 2% tax increase equally on all classes. And I guess it's, it's kind of a BD option, which is that we review the business tax ratio each year and make annual decisions. And the other option being, until we come up with a better measurement tool, and that we direct staff to look into finding a better tool for measuring business attraction. Is that a good word? Business, another assessment tool for business.
Any discussion? Is there seconded for the motion? All those in favor? So, move, somebody want to move to adjourn?
Move adjournment?
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.